Yeah, I'll call this work session to order October 7th. You join me for a moment, Stanley Pudgele?
Yes. Pudgele, it's to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia since one nation under God. In this law of liberty and justice for all.
There are two things coming. I think we'll have any today. So we'll move on to our first discussion item. That's a Panda Frog update. Have our illustrious Panda Frog chair here today. I don't know. Your staff to tune this up or you guys are just gonna kind of give us?
You know, I just think, you know, a couple of years ago, we decided that it'd be a good opportunity, maybe after each Panda Frog to have people come in and kind of. Give a deep brief on how things went and if anything lined up for next year. So that's all this is.
Okay, well, very, very perfect for those who are already Paul Koz, current president of Panda Frog. And what he has Scott Knutson, our immediate past president. So what we want to do is give, just as Justin said, a brief update of what 25 looked like. Some things that we changed that went well, some things that we can continue to work on. And some preliminary thinking about our key focuses for 26. So 25, uh. I would say another successful year of progress. Keeping with our, our name, always opportunities, but we got many, many more positive comments and feedback than we, you know, limited to know negative. Always things we work on. 25, we think about it was a big year of change for us. We changed our focus. With the goal of trying to take some pressure off downtown, especially during our fake weekend. And that really came out of this meeting last year where we talked about. How we shut down our streets and it was recommended by the city to say, well, why don't we look at it on Thursday and Sunday? And boy, that is working extremely well. Um, it created a much safer environment, a good venue for our families. Thursday night, we put another event on and brought our Minnesota Fire into the club. And it was fun to watch young families coming to find on fire trucks, but young kids don't like to do that. Friday, the city chamber along with Lakeville Works put on a touch of truck. We had very focused in young families. And then we pivoted our race car alley back out on the Holy Oak, which took the pressure off 209 and some of the businesses off of the wheel. Again, quick feedback from those. So again, that pivot on trying to move things off. Uh, you know, other places and keep just on Holy Oak was really a, a super positive move. They also pivoted our, uh, craft fair, not known as the Boho Market, out of the, uh. Curling Club post office lot and moved that down to the Atlanta Health Pavilion, again, using another partner in the city. Uh, for a first year, it went extremely well. We're excited, already planning to, uh, move that to three days for next year. That's what the craft vendors want. Uh, using shuttle with communities and that. Yeah. Always little things that you learn as you make changes, but it moved very well. It also enabled us to attempt to put some more handicap parking in downtown. Uh, I give us a A for intent, but a B for execution because what we realized is people didn't. Short of putting handicap on every parking spot, it didn't, didn't pan out. So we're going to take that a next step, but we like the concept of. Giving that type of access right downtown in the middle of it. Uh. And then we moved our family tailgate. That's a Tuesday, but we moved that out to Casperson Park and while. Home run, that park suited that event extremely well. Our growth on that event just continues to. Skyrocket, which is great. It's free, 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 everything and young families and it really played out extremely well. You know, with all that change, communication is key. We thought we did a lot, always opportunities for continuous improvement. One of the things that helps us a lot is getting out in front of that early. So when we know our changes, getting them to you so that we can get our approvals and so forth as early as possible. So we can get to that one of the businesses. But one of the things we learned from talking to our DLBA is so they can get to their business partners and then to their patrons. So it, we all have to. Share that communication. So, um. You guys probably saw the new marketing tools worked phenomenally well. Positive feedbacks on that direct mail. We're gonna. Step into that even further this year. Uh, that is, we have to continue that along with our social media and so forth. And, and when we look at our events, we saw growth overall, pretty much everything, even our small events. You know, puzzle contests sold out at 90 teams. Up with some tech thing, you know, some of the stuff that, that the yard center, they sold out our card tournaments. For the largest we've ever seen. So and, and part of that, we're a growing community, but I think people are enjoying all the events, not just the big ones. So. Uh, and of course, none of it happens without great sponsorship of our, our 25 sponsors. They were great. Um. As we look at 26, we're already deep into it. We've been going through and confirming a lot of our key. Repeat events. Uh, those are almost all locked in. We're working on our new events. We don't expect to see anything big. The way we work on new events is we solicit from the community. You want an event, you bring hope to us. Um, some like. Susan's working with us on, you know, our new bocce ball courts over at Spiglass Park. Four parts, let's put a tournament over there. Those are the type of things that we see. We've got a couple athletic clubs talking to us. Girls' bike football, tennis teams, all good, community involved, community run events. So we're excited about that. And of course, we're always, never stop working behind garbage. Mortar bodies. Hey, as things grow, you gotta take care of that. And so things like doing a midday Saturday full of trash, which we did this year. We gotta figure out ways to do more of that. Mortar bodies, how many do we need out of these people? So things nobody else wants to think about, but it's so critical to run a 20 fast foot. So the primary thing that we're focused on 26 is really around safety and security. And I'm gonna let Tom talk about that. We've already had some good conversations with our lieutenant partner, Jeremy.
Can I just jump in one second? Is that the only thing you agree this year with on the music and part of Wednesday night? Is that? Trying to do that again, my share?
Yes, yes, we, we like that partnership. We take that one as the inside of life at the lake.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Trying to build it out and over time build it as a tribute, Dan Knight. So yeah, we, we think that's great and, uh, had, if not the largest, one of the largest crowds. That week. So yeah, very well received.
Okay.
Paul, um, for anyone who does not know who I am, Tom Knutson, um, as Paul said, an immediate past president. Been on the board for a while and, um, one of the, the pieces that has kind of come to, to me, um. Is our safety and security and kind of leading those discussions and being that person on the board there that does those things. The whole board works on a lot of things, um, together collectively, but that's, this is one of the things that. I, I work on and just wanted to give you some. What we're looking at ongoing, um, for reviews and arguments going, not just into 26, but going into, into the future. Um, as Paul said, we've met with Lieutenant Repaul at the police department already. Started some very good conversations. We're going to continue to have those with both police department and fire department to see. And make sure what we do with our, our safety and security. We get a lot of people downtown and we want to make sure that. Safety is, is top priority for everybody that's, that's down there. Um. Some of the, the key things that, that we're talking to them about is our street closures and, and our barricades. One of the things that Lieutenant Repaul brought for us is some barricades that. We know as close as Hastings has gotten a grant to, um, purchase some barricades that we can use for our. Some movable barricades that are capable of stopping vehicles if they need to. Um, and. We like that idea. We've seen that in some of the other communities that we've been in. Um, so they are a useful tool. We could take advantage of, still, still working through those.
Those are like concrete barricades?
They are not. They actually are, um, smaller. Moveable. They, uh, come in a trailer. Um, so the ones that Hastings actually has, they all are in a trailer. And we have enough pieces to assemble that they can. Barricade a few different intersections.
Okay.
And then the ability to move them would be a couple of police officers, a couple of public works. Workers. Um, it doesn't take a lot to move them, but they do, um. Serve their purpose, the stopping vehicle. And it comes through. So, um. Very, very neat technology. Um, if you can look at it that way, that it doesn't take a team of people and the equipment to move them. But they will stop a, stop a vehicle if needed. Uh, so we're trying to figure out, um, where the, the right places for those are, especially since. We're, we're closing Holy Oak from Thursday. Through Sunday and we have a lot of things going on with. Fire trucks out on the street on Thursday and touch trucking cars and stuff on Friday and parade on Saturday. But as well as around Halloween, we have the carnival that goes across and, you know, takes up. You know, two blocks of Halloween right there. And what's the, the right area so that we don't have. You know, an avenue of approach for the, that, you know, but yet we still have to, you know. Work through those conversations and that's the conversations we're having with, um, police department, fire department. What does that look? Our department still has to be able to get in if there's something going on, but we want to make sure that other cars can't get in. That's not. And so, which is just like, we can't, you know, put a hard close on Holy Oak for the whole weekend because we have a parade and cruise night that then also need to come down. Um, so we're working through this. The carnival area is another one that we've been talking to the police department about. And one of the things that we're talking to them about is fencing in the carnival here. So it defines a space for the carnival. On. Gives us monitored entrances for the carnival so we can see who's coming into each. Um, and that the fencing, as we talked through it, it would be a. A variety of fencing. Type devices. So it doesn't, won't look fortress around the. The carnival area. And this is, you know, with input from both the police department, fire department and a carnival. Who may, you know, travel the, the country, um. The whole piece that most people don't know is that they actually live here. Um, they live just west of our city. Uh, so this is, this is their community. They, they enjoy this one because it brings them home for the summer for, for a couple of weeks. Um, but they do spend the rest of the season, you know, in sort of. North and South Dakota, Iowa, but, um, they're here. So this is, this one's special to them because. I mean, they don't want anything to happen at any of their carnivals. They surely don't want it to happen at theirs. So, and this is where, this is where their kids and their kids' friends are. Um, so they're having very good conversations with them because it really. It helps with their input of. This is what we have done, good or bad, in another city. I know, um, a couple of their other cities that they. Perform at do fencing their carnival here. And it just kind of helps, um. Like I said, giving the entrance and knowing who's coming in there. And then also if somebody was to get trespassed from the carnival for doing something. It defines that space of what, what does that mean or cannot be. So it's just those conversations that were, were still happening. Um, another conversation that we're having with the department is different personnel and what would that look like? And, you know, what paid for by the end of frog, um, we got the. Outside security and how, how could we as an organization help supplement what the police department's doing by hiring? And outside security. Good. I, I would say very good conversations that we're having with the police department with those. Both things that we, that those security officers would be able to help the police department with, take some of the pressure off. With police department. So they're, they can focus on what they need to do as police officers and some of those things, um. That a security guard could need. I'm talking about that and, and just to amend, that goes right into. One of the things that we're looking at and we will. More than likely be doing this year is implementing a bag policy. For our larger events and our downtown things. And it's similar to, you know, Rosemont. City that's right here by us has a bank policy for their festival. Late front day is going on on the same weekend as Panda Frog has a bank policy. And then when you go to any other larger events like, you know, things, things and stuff like that, they all have that. So anywhere that you go, um, to include. Festivals and events that are smaller than ours have been implemented by policies. So that's something that we're. We're doing it would be, you know, similar to, you know, one clear bag, small, small in size, like a small purse or something. Medical or diaper bags for families with, with children, you know, would be exceptions to those because we're still the. We need to make it accessible for our community and our families. So, you know, that's what we're working through the, the wording on. On how that would work and where it would be. And that would be, you know, in, in the whole downtown here. Talked to Lions that, you know, they have their large event at the art center. They support it. We've talked to babes. They support it. So it's, it's good that, you know, they're all having the, good discussions in support of what we're looking at. And that's where it comes in key to. Having those, if we have, you know, security people that can help do that versus asking police officers. Downtown or the carnival at the art center or wherever they be, you know, the security guards at babes. And, you know, handle those types of things versus having our police officers task with. On things like that. Um, so that's. What we're looking at. And then we're also. As we go to other festivals and we take our world and our ambassadors or royalty out, we keep looking at this. Always looking and saying, you know. How other people do things and we get ideas, um, both on both sides of that, on what, what we do better and. You know, things that, that we know that we're doing. So we keep, keep looking at all of those things to, to help us to keep us safe and. And a good vision for all.
So, so I think that, that covers the core. And again, we're in contact with our neighboring festivals as well, have. Relationships with a number of the other board members. And that's it. We're finally realizing that, wait a second, we need to do more of that. We're all dealing with the same things, security, safety and so forth. And so the more we can partner and, and, uh, share, I think the better off we are. So. Um, but no, I, so I, that's what we wanted to bring to you. And we're deep into our planning again. Uh. As I said, our goal is to do most of our planning here this fall. Come January 1, when now we switch into execution phase, the core team, and there's. Core team of 13 spots on the board, working board, just like you, we meet every month with a working meeting every month. Um, and we, but we're feeling good about where we're at. We'll pull our full team Panda Frog together. That's a spot where we bring all of our athletes and our city partners and those type, four times a year. Next one is, uh, 1117. And we mentioned that on Saturday, that's where it'd be great to have somebody that represents the council. Join us in that compartment. You can stay plugged in, but you're not. Minute to 12 for 24 meetings a year type thing. But it, it allows you to stay plugged in and say, okay, how do we always stay a partner? Uh, so we're excited about where we're headed. And, and again. The, the, the safety, security thing is the one that has been on our back of our mind for a lot of. Time and we keep making steps. We're gonna take some more steps. We have them. And again, it's not just what are we doing for 26. We're thinking, okay, if those go well, what are we, we got, we know it's going to continue to evolve. That's just the nature of where we're at.
Um, I just wanted to do two comments. One, I'm glad to hear there's some work around the carnival. Cause I think Friday night and Saturday night get a little. Uh. Wild in some ways. Uh, and so more parental supervision would be great. I think if we could just, you know, make sure everyone's parent is there. Uh, it would, um, but at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference last summer, I went to a session that was, uh, geared towards festivals that citizens are doing. And the security topic came up. It seems like, uh, a big trend is that using public works, um, clouds as barricades. I don't know if you've already talked about that, but that seems to be what a lot of cities are doing, um. Especially for big things because they're easily movable, uh, and they can stop a vehicle. Um, so I don't. I don't know where we're at with that kind of conversation, but.
We already use them here.
Yeah.
For a couple of our key venues, but, and we've looked at those, we're like, again, these movable barricades that become very. Front. And again, when you see the technology of them, it, you can literally, we went up to one in, what was it? North Hudson, I think is where. We could move it, the three of us. So we realized, okay, wait a second, but when you watch it, a car cannot move through it. It has the technology that just pops a car up and all of a sudden you've got things up and, and they're stopped. So. And the fact that we've seen them, not only, we know Hastings has them. Jeremy's already in contact with, with that team. We see him in other communities. So it's like, well, wait a second, if there are grants and there are a number of them out there. How do we partner together and get more here so that we can try and do that? But. Again, blocking, we, every parade we go to, we watch what's not just on, but what's back another block. And we, you know, and every community is a little different, but we're seeing a lot more force two blocks back. Cause you, you know, you have to stop it. So we're always, I say, we're one accident, one crazy away from having a great thing go pop. So we gotta stay ahead of it. That's, that's the game. Try and stay ahead of it. Thank you.
Can I, the bag policy that you're talking about, so would that be event based or like the entire downtown for parade day or? I think, how, how is that? Talk to me a little about that.
Okay. Um. It. That's, that's some things that there's actually. We have asked. Our. Police department representative, they hit with the city attorney and, and have some conversations as well. Um, so that we can make sure that our bag policy is. Right and enforced it. Um, so I'm not trying to not answer your question because we want, we want it to be. A good policy that can. Work in our veins. And currently what we're, what we're looking at is. Those places that are. And we'll take the carnival. That's why we're looking at fencing in the carnival because it defines that space. The Lions, what they do at the art center is going to define the space and say, look, babes. B52, all of those places, there's, it's a defined space. Art, questions and things that we're trying to figure out is. How is our downtown, when the road is closed and everything, are we, how are we defined? And so it's those kinds of questions that we have that we, we don't know yet. Um, so that's. And trying to, trying to make the day policy. So right now it would be. Event based in, in the ones, in the carnival and, but then how is that?
I think that's social media. I think Burnsville, did they do magnetometers this year?
Yes. And then, and part of the difference with they did, and we, we met with a couple of their board members and, uh, it did not go very well.
Just remember the first night.
But, but it's, and, and that's. Their space is far different than ours. So because, you know, they're in just one area. Where ours is, you know, downtown and a couple of blocks on either side. By the time you take in businesses on each side.
Holy Oak.
And we go from. 206, you know, babes, all the way down to 210 and then added the, the Boho Market that's down, you know, at the arena. Um, whereas for Burnsville, they were in one space, late front day. In one space, the whole area is, is contained. And that's what, so those are the questions that, that we need answered. So we can. Write our bag policy, even Rosemont is similar to the, the area wise. It's all just a space. Whereas. Area that we take up is, is larger and has. Even if. And I'm not saying we wouldn't, but even if we, you know, define the whole downtown, we also have residences. We have multiple different kinds of businesses. We have, you know, public parks, we have streets. So it's just, that's, it's just a. It's a, it's a different piece that works, how you work.
I also want to say I love that Boho Market. I think that was a great, I think I went there every day.
How much?
Quite a bit. Um, it, I, I, it was just, it was great for that. I don't, I don't even remember buying anything previously with that, but. So. It's more consumer, but thank you to both of you for the, I mean, the work that you guys do. I know it's enormous and this is a marquee festival in Twin Cities. Perfect. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. The last thing I would just, uh, say, as I've said this to others on the board, but no one's. Really said, yeah, this is a great idea because it's a good idea. Next year's gonna get a lot of focus on America 250. And so thinking about how Panda Frog can either work with, because they've got resources for festivals in the states that. Know the entity, America 250, yeah. How we can kind of incorporate some of that. Stuck with Panda Frog would be cool because it'll be, you know, all of July and June, there'll be a lot of conversation about. Country and the foundation and all stuff and being a part of it would be good.
It's tough to think that 50 years ago, I saw him buy centennial buttons.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you both. Appreciate it. All right. If I move on to our new fire station design update, she's fire. Heard it over you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh. I was thinking from direction from the last work session, we went back to work and, uh, Paul's some areas to reduce and. Uh, Quinn and Brooke from CNH are here to kind of go over that. So. Um, I think roughly it was 30, 200 square feet, roughly 1.2 million reductions, but. All of them kind of cover the areas that we went through and open that.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. I'm speaking to Mayor, I'm with CNN, Brooke Jacobson as well. And, uh, what I wanted to just introduce is that we, uh, as a whole team, you know, the city staff and. I think we've team, uh, brainstormed again, but with the goal of making reductions that would. Uh, only have limited impact on core functions, operations response. And that was, we're still, you know, um. Dying principle that we needed to be, you know, keeping back of our muscle. So those, those are areas that we were consciously, uh. Watching to make sure they weren't negatively impacting. But the areas went through tonight, while they have impacts, of course. Uh, they were not exactly those both margins. So with that, we're just gonna give you some quick visuals and then we'll just quickly talk about it.
We're gonna start with the site plan and then we'll look at the floor plan. Um, site plan is a little bit different from the floor plans in that we actually made the changes that we were talking about. So you'll see the current layout that we're talking about. Uh, and the floor plans are the reverse of that. We haven't made those changes yet, but we're shaving everything and shall walk through what changes will be. Um, the site plan, the, the main change, uh, that we looked at here. Was, um, basically had to do with the parking lot on the north side for, for the public, um, in regards to the fitness area as well. So we used to have a larger parking lot that kind of came down, turned the corner and then exited onto the internal road. So we reduced all of the parking area that we had here simplified, um, not only the parking lot, but the sidewalks, um, and some of the building area. And so what you're seeing now, uh, the red area is the area that reduced down and then, um, the new parking lot layout just kind of takes. As they come in off the job and go just straight out to that internal road and that. That was the main change on a site plan perspective. As we move into the floor plan, um, so the areas that are all shaded in red are square foot reductions. We'll have a couple of different things to talk about on the second floor, but on the first floor, everything you see in red is what we're kind of taking out of the building. Um, so just starting up front, we were removing the truck display from this end. We're maintaining the lobby, that's to do all of that. Uh, on this other side, we are removing the, or we would be removing the confidence room. And then we looked at how to be more efficient, um, and we reduced some space in the, the larger public area of the classroom. And so one of the things we're looking at is removing the shaded box in red here. And what it does is take out square footage, reduces the occupancy of that slightly, and then would also take out the honorable partitions. So while not a square foot. Um for part of the square foot, but there's also an additional number associated with the honorable partition, like I see. Moving into the fitness area, we talked about reducing the size, overall size of the fitness area. So then along with that, reducing some of the fitness storage and then making this more of just an internal firefighter use. Uh fitness room. So with that, no longer needing that entrance vestibule. And since we'd be reducing uh the amount of staff utilizing this, that wouldn't be outside staff, just. Our department staff, we could reduce some space inside of the tornado shelter locker room as well as one restroom and shower in there. So again, everything you see in red is what would um be moving project. And the other thing we looked at is within the apparatus space, we laid out after laying out apparatus, talking about different operations and functions of that space. We thought reasonable that we could eliminate four feet out of that apparatus space that would come out of the front of both sets of bays. That'd be the entire length and just um picking out that first four feet.
So why can't we combine six and seven? Can't we double park those smaller trucks?
So if we do that, then we then what's labeled as a decon bay now is occupied. So looking at as far as from coming back from a call.
No, no, I'm not talking about those two trucks that are there. Why can't that be just one?
There's what's missing is there's a second trailer in one of those bays. So there's two trucks. A trailer behind each and a third trailer that sits in one of the bays also. So we have a the water rescue equipment, a brush truck and a drone trailer.
There's just none of this.
The the one trailer's not. So there's two trailers with two utility trucks showing already in the bay.
Yeah.
There's a third trailer that we we forgot to account for in the bays.
We realized that in our conversations this morning that there was one trailer that was missing from it. Um and so we we talked about potentially that would be in in this bay because this was the shorter trailer.
Yeah. But look at it.
And then the last thing on the the first floor is we looked at, could we, you know, work on layout within the hose and training tower to take a little bit of square footage out of this space to be more efficient. So um in both directions, we're taking out just the smallest sliver um in the plan north south direction. Um and then a wider sliver through um kind of east west direction. Uh we have just enough room to make the stairs and everything work in there. Those are the changes on the first floor. As we move up to the second floor, so we have um a couple of um different color coding that I'll walk through. Uh first thing I'll I'll say was since I just talked about the hose and training tower on the first floor, those changes would be the same on the second and third floors. So that's what you're seeing um in both of these, that small sliver in the plan north. Direction and then a wider sliver in the plan east west direction and same on the third floor. As we move to the residence side of the station. Uh so what we looked at doing is I'll stick with the reductions, which is in red, is removing the wellness area from here. And then trying to relocate that space, that smaller scale and repurpose some of the underutilized space that we have. And so we'd be looking at moving that to the screen area. So that's the relocation piece of it. So we are cap recapturing this space that already exists. We would just be adding a little bit, so it's not a direct one to one on the removal. But you'll see when we get into the number side, we're accounting for the amount that we are removing out of the solution. So there is an overall reduction in square footage. Uh just not a true one to one. And then the last thing we looked at is what is color coded in blue, and that is if we were to just rough in these two dorm suites. Uh so so we rough in the the plumbing, but just leave it as one open room that could be. Used as storage or for other functions until the time is needed. And then all the walls um and fixtures could actually be. Put in and then utilized as two additional dorm suites.
I'll cover uh the numbers associated with this now. Yes, bring up the two. So one of the ones that's not uh visually shown on the plan, uh that the first item is deducting snowmelt. Uh so that would be removing uh some of the concrete snowmelt areas at the aprons that are uh apparatus base. Uh in those areas. So that's a sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar deduct. Deducts two through six, which would be on the floor plan, but um are the fitness, well, and parking uh of this one. Uh two through six can all go together as a group, uh because it's all bringing the fitness room down. That means the locker room gets smaller. All those pieces together as a combined reduction that was two hundred and forty nine thousand sixteen dollars. Uh I need all these numbers were um estimated with through RGM. Um if calculating actual square foot plus size, so. Um they're not just, you know, just rough numbers. They actually did some calculations on that. Reduction number seven. Remove the truck lobby in the front. That would reduce that extra lot area there. And that was a hundred and sixty two thousand eight seventy-three. Uh number eight was removing that conference room. That's up in that area through there. Um that's a hundred and twenty-four thousand two fifty-eight. And nine and ten are kind of the combined reduction in the occupancy number and the removal of the um. Partition and combine those reduce a hundred and thirty thousand eight thirty-eight. Um going on to number eleven, the uh four foot reduction in the length of the bays. Um that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand two thirty-five. Uh number twelve uh is the three levels of hose tower of nineteen thousand four oh four. Uh number thirteen is a second floor, uh we the uh rough up only of the two future dorm rooms. Uh that saves sixty-seven thousand eight ninety-five. Uh number fourteen was that combination of eliminating the uh the wellness room up front. We allocating a green space in the back, that a total net reduction of three hundred square feet. Uh uh for a ninety thousand three hundred and sixty-nine uh savings. And then the last one is not a visual one, uh number fifteen on our list was to switch the exterior walls of the. Office admin uh and dorm areas to a metal stud in blue of in concrete block. The uh apparatus base would need to stay concrete block, the dirt building that's areas. Um but changing the outer walls to that would save a hundred and fifty thousand eight thirty-four. So with all those total, and as we mentioned earlier, that's a one point uh two two three million um savings reduction. Uh bringing us down to um twenty-nine million six zero five. Any questions, things we can help answer?
Can you remind me what the wellness room was again, said?
Yeah, the things that we would see occurring in a wellness room uh would be uh some of the core stretching uh yoga. Quiet exercises, it's kind of the mental health piece of the physical uh world there. So that's a lot of all that would be.
I mean. Only doing the roughing for the dorms doesn't send me any signs. About the same day, um because we'll pay double that to do it later. Um still, just, is it just standard practice? I'm not a contractor. Have two and a half million dollars worth of contingency? I'm just looking at the overall number on the next page. Just seems like a lot. Again, I know we have to, I mean, are you finding in a lot of cases you're not having to tap into that? I mean, I I know you have to put that out there, but. Yeah, um.
I guess to speak for RJM, um because some of that contingency is we're so early in the project, so we're still in um. You know, early schematics, but this estimate is done, so they don't have. Thorough construction documents, so they have higher contingencies at that point. And then as we work our way through, you know, schematic and design development and then construction documents, uh some of those design contingencies would would go away once you get to that last phase and construction document. Contingency. And then uh the construction contingency is that that's, you know, once we move into construction, any contingency there. So their thought is just because they're they're taking basically their numbers off of square foot cost and sometimes some things like. Um some water pieces and equipment or things like that, mostly it's based off of a square foot cost and not necessarily on the ball the detailed information.
Paul, this is putting you on the spot. Over the next fifteen years, are you gonna spend more than sixty thousand dollars on? Snow removal? At this side?
At the same.
Because if we get, I understand that's the cost of the snowmelt system.
This is more the firefighters shoveling. This isn't snow removal. This isn't them, all the work coming out.
So when it comes to the snowmelt, that is one thing that is very easy for us to do as an alternate. So if it's coming in. Under budget or a good day, that's something you could pick up right away.
It's covering the first eight feet or so from the apparatus space where it's really hard to get the plows in. And so it ends up being a certain amount of backdrain, but the rest of it's hand shovel. So that's why we often uh provide for it, but it's not, you know, certainly something that isn't mandatory and can be worked about.
The two things that jumped out at me were were the snowmelt system. Um to me that uh especially, what'd you say, six feet?
Oh, yeah, about eight ish, yeah, yeah. It can vary, but. Not that you can safely get a plow up near the building without worrying about uh getting something.
Yeah, because I mean, I've seen garages without that snowmelt system and to keep up with that in a winter storm is, takes a lot of back uh backwork. Um and then the other one is I agree with the mayor um with the dorms, I it just. To me, it would make more sense to just have those, have those built in. Um the rest of the stuff, like I appreciate um the thought that went into this, but I I would say for my money, I would say those two things.
Any other questions? Mike, did you have? Anything you want to add? I mean, I know it's on apples to apples. County just went out and their construction bid on their recycling center was two million less than they had proposed. So maybe we're in a really good market. I don't know what our timing is. And maybe we're in company, it's no promise, but we might feel better. Quick to react, I guess.
We're still looking at. Next year, early next year.
Yes, we're we're looking at a uh winter bidding uh for a spring construction. So that which is as quick as that we can. Yeah, uh make that process happen to the point where I don't know. Um yeah, there there certainly is the potential that that the prices will come in better. We'll, the closer we get, the more RGM. Will know the current status of that as well, and they'll start to figure that in if prices have been going down, the next assessment will come down.
Mayor, just for clarification, you wanted. To add in snowmelt in the dorms?
No, it's the dorms. And then we'll see if they fix the budget, if the proposal comes in plus, it's an easy alternate.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other? A little bit. Okay. Thanks guys for all our work on this.
Appreciate that, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, I'm turning it over to Joe. For an updated amended joint powers agreement with school district. Zooming on. Five years.
Good evening, uh Mayor Council. I've got Susan Johnson with, uh Susan does the. The majority of what we deal with with this particular joint powers agreement. Uh but I'll start with these out and uh Susan will jump in here with a few things as well. Um. But the uh we reference in the packet that uh we had a joint powers agreement with the school district. Actually, since nineteen ninety-three that it's been amended uh multiple times. Um since um the existing joint powers agreement that we had really addresses three particular. Uh topics or three topics of use. Uh the first one is regarding scheduling of facilities. Um the second is regarding maintenance of facilities and the third is regarding intercharging of fees between the school district and the city. And the this particular agreement, we've actually been talking about since twenty twenty-one. Uh so it's been. Uh in the works for quite a while, on and off between uh city staff and school district staff with um community education and and the business managers of the the district. And over the last six months, we started those conversations really in earnest to try to settle on an agreement, a new agreement that streamlines the process and kind of clean some things up. And Susan's gonna cover a little bit on the history of how we landed here. Uh the major change with this new agreement, though, is ultimately that we would be eliminating the city's scheduling of facilities. That would now go entirely to the school district. And the city's maintenance of school district facilities. Uh the only remaining parts in the new agreement really pertains to how we would handle use of one another's facilities. But I think it'll be helpful as Susan kind of covers the history and the why did we land here?
All right, thank you. Um so the. The history, I think, is this, the city has taken over the scheduling of the school facilities. Um so about two years ago, um the schools took back the high school campuses. Um it was super difficult to schedule that because the coaches didn't necessarily get me all their information. So it was, there was some double booking going on. So they've taken back the high school campuses for about two years. That's worked really well. Um and then, so I do all of the elementary schools, all the middle schools. Um and the process starts in, usually I send out the package in about November. Um the associations need to have requests back to me by the end of December and then January, February, I spend time scheduling all of the fields. So I schedule them, Jane has to manually enter those all into our rec system and the permits go out from there. Um and so uh.
The fields and building?
Just fields. No, we don't.
The gymnasium?
No, we don't do anything in ours, just all fields. Yep, so. Um and then once the permits go out, um kind of, kind of where things get a little complicated is if it's. Um typically we shoot for April fifteenth to open fields. Um depending on the weather, might be April first, might be April thirtieth, things like that. And typically the schools may have a different date that we have. So then it gets to be parks, park facilities are open, school facilities are not. And then in, you know, other nights, it might be schools are closed, parks are open. So people are very confused with what's open, which fields are open, which ones are closed. Um and again, we don't have any say in when the school closes theirs, so we take a lot of flack for why aren't they open? Um and again, we're just kind of caught in the middle of those things. Um and then again, typically in January, February, I schedule all the fields for the entire year. So April fifteenth to the end of October. Um usually once school starts, I start to get cancellation notices. Please let your user know that they can't use Prince Lake Education Center next Tuesday or tomorrow or whatever. So again, everybody caught in the middle of, well, why can't you use this field? I don't know, I'm just passing along the information that the school says that we can't use it. So it's kind of, it's kind of that middle, that middle piece of it, so.
I was gonna say, what I'll add to that is I think our goal, as we set out in these conversations, was to try to look for efficiencies, not just for us. Um it's time consuming for Susan, time consuming for Jane. We are caught in the middle of these conversations often. But it's also not a good use, I think, for the the users of the facilities. Um and that goes back to um the maintenance of those. While we do daily maintenance on fields uh throughout the summer months, we don't do major maintenance. We don't schedule out, you know, backstop replacements and those types of things, but we do get blamed for it. Um so it's again, one of those scenarios where uh city staff is often caught in the middle of of these situations. And there's not much that we can do aside from just passing along. So our goal was to work with the district to try to kind of give them full responsibility of their own fields back so that they can now. See the concerns, the complaints and and then address from there. So did you, uh sorry, something?
Yeah, no, that's fine. No, um yeah, we've had multiple meetings with them on taking the, you know, them taking their schedule in the back and they seem, you know, capable of doing that, ready to do that. Yeah, no, that's fine. No, um, yeah, we've had multiple meetings with them on taking the, you know, them taking their schedule in the back and they seem, you know, capable of doing that, ready to do that.
Uh, one of the other things I will mention is um, the existing agreement, one of the other components we kept from the original agreement we have in this. Is that uh, we do have some site specific agreements and we wanted to make sure that we maintain that. There's two that I'll point to that will not be impacted should this move forward. Uh, one is the ci- the city's continued maintenance and uh, scheduling for the disc golf course. Uh, we'll maintain that as we always have. Yep. Uh, and the other one that we have, which is a standalone agreement, is the shared use of the community van trailers that the city owns. And our use of the percussion equipment for community van. Um, so it was another agreement we wanted to make sure you were aware is going to be, or is our intention would be maintained. So. Uh, aside from that, uh, I guess it's just if there are any questions that you have at this point.
So so under the old agreement, like Lakeville baseball and Lakeville football, they were to use a field, they were going to the city. And now they'll be going through the school district.
They'll be going through the school district for school district facilities. They'll go through us for our own.
Yeah, but like if you got a football team that practices behind Kenwood Trail Middle School, they would have been doing that with the city before, but now they'll be doing it in the school district.
Correct.
Most associations are already working with both of us for tournaments and things like that. So they're used to. Co- contacting both of us.
And they're already working with us on uh, the events.
So one question I had is just on this, there's a lot in here about alcohol. So if there's a school sport being played in a park where we allow alcohol, but is. The schools say that it can't? Like if all of a sudden they were gonna play at Antler's or something, I'm just trying to like.
The difference would be um, I'll point to the Grand St. Grand Prairie Park. If the school district decides to utilize that facility for and rent that facility through us for a game, we wouldn't allow. Uh, Lakeville Baseball Association to sell like or at that event because it's not allowed for the district. So it's pinpointing the portion of the facility that's being used by the school district.
That being said though, as somebody who's hit into a lot of youth soccer games and things like that, Steph shows up on sidelines.
Yeah.
That we don't know about, um, and the association doesn't know about, or the school doesn't know about. I'm sure that they could impose their own rules on school events at city facilities that they can't have that.
Any questions?
No.
And what's another thing?
I think that so, like I said, it's been, we've been discussing it for years with the district and it's evolved a little over time, um, as we've gone, but I think they're. They're in favor of, you know, from everything we've discussed with the district. I think they are excited about the direction this is going for the district. Uh, they also see that there's been issues in the way that our this is kind of the structure. Um, so I think they're excited about from that perspective. They'll have full control of their own facilities. They don't have to hear from Susan regularly, so.
It it's on their board agenda for tomorrow night under their discussion. So I don't know if, I think then it would come back for approval after that if they.
Okay, yeah, I just know there was a big. Uproar amongst some youth associations this fall because they felt like the district changed a lot of rules on facilities with short notice. And so I heard a lot about that. And I don't know if this impacts that at all or if that means anything. But no, it's because it's more inside stuff, so it's really not really a mess, I guess.
Yeah, and I would say, uh, you know, when it, when it comes to the scheduling, it's part of the reason why we wanted to make sure we had this out. Well before Susan would historically have sent out her notification for reservations.
Yeah.
Um, so we want to make sure we get it on that timeline. A lot, there are, I would say, our regular, the regular associations we work with are aware that this is already being discussed. We didn't want to surprise someone with it. Um, and I would say the other component with it is they, um, the district, I think, has been prepping for this as well. So Susan's ready, should this move forward, I think the district is ready. It's just a matter of going to that next step.
You know how much we'll save on mowing?
So we, it's hard to quantify. The exact amount. What I would say and.
Government could give you soft numbers all the time. You just throw something out there.
What I would say is this, the, it's actually the dragging of the fields. The district actually contracts for mowing. So it's the daily prep on the fields, which is done by one of our park maintenance two staff members.
Okay.
So it's a full-time regular staff member that is doing that for all of the district's fields. And we'll now be able to pull that person back to do all their work on our own property. So that in and of itself is a huge one.
Sounds like an F T. That we use on other expanded parks.
Yeah, it 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 means you don't have to add another person.
Right, right. Yeah, so there, that's. That's what I'm saying. Throw, you know, that's the.
It's gonna cover us for Grand Prairie is is dependent where we're headed. So there's, there's that.
That's fine with me. I mean, I think as long as we've got the stakeholder feedback and feel fine with it. It's kind of a silly agreement to begin with. I think that we're maintaining. Another entity, especially considering the conversation always is of the three school districts, but.
I think it was well intended at the time. I'm sure there is.
You're bringing somebody a favor.
Well, and I think where it started, the the district didn't have summer staff. They didn't have the education staff, so we did it all. That hasn't been the case for years, so.
Any questions? And thanks guys, appreciate it, appreciate it. All right, great increases.
For this opportunity to share all these wonderful numbers. So starting out with the enterprise funding budgets and the utility rates. Um, we are looking at for the water uh, rates have a six percent increase. And fuel rates have a three percent increase. My resources will be four percent and then five percent with sort of light rates. Um, that is put together in this is in completely all of the capital purposes that are coming along and um. We've got two scenarios that we presented and and that's why um, we know like the water treatment. Expansion or satellite, whichever direction we end up going will have an impact. Um, but for twenty twenty-six, our rates for the water fund would both be uh, six percent under either of those scenarios. Um, the impact to the home, like the regular average residential during winter quarter is roughly two hundred, two dollars fifty. Two dollars fifty cents a month. Um, this average summer usage for that resident A V D and um, decrease of three dollars and eighty-four cents a month. And then the high irrigation residential users, these um, rate increases would amount to uh, ten dollars roughly um, additional per month. So just wanted to give you the the. The bones of that with the impact to the residents, the um. With the two different scenarios, as I mentioned, you know, that either one, either scenario that we go with. Has the same increase for twenty twenty-six. Looking at the rate increases for the two different scenarios on page five of your packet. Um, the satellite plant would be um, a five percent increase in about twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. Whereas the expansion would only need a two percent increase in twenty twenty-seven.
Then we'd be pegged all the rest of that. Or we would have.
Yeah, and then incorporate, we're gonna have issues in debt either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but that would help.
We wanted to.
So, um.
And you might, sorry to step in, you know, on one of these charts, you'll notice um, we also show in future years, there's a projected pretty big gap in the. Cash balance and the the needed cash balance. And. We couldn't really, I mean, we could slow that down at the beginning and have less of an increase now, but it starts to put our um, current position in a bad place. I only mention that because if things were to go to our projections, it could mean that as opposed to zero percent increases moving forward, you might be able to see some decreases if the council. Took all of that, so.
I mean. Yeah, I mean, I just. Wouldn't be nice to be able, I mean, we're. We're almost double of what our desirable cash position is in thirty-three.
Right, and that's what I was talking about.
Right, so. And so the council at that point could start talking about rate cuts.
You could, yeah, absolutely. It's just, it's hard to do. You know, the question I always ask is, well, could we do it two percent now as opposed to six? And we could, but then our current. Cash position gets low beneath our targets. Um, and so we kind of need to do what we are doing now to keep that our current years good.
Well, that's what I was wondering is like, did you run an analysis for versus say two and a half, two and a half, you know, three, three, three. For six years versus just doing. I mean, once, I guess, I don't know, like, do we want to do it all at once or do you ease into it? I mean, I guess. Talking about a hundred and twenty dollars a year on the high end, you can do it all at once. The targets are so dependent on summer weather.
Right.
Yeah, so to me, it's, it's important that we stay year to year at our target, not knowing what. Drought's coming next year or if it's a super wet summer next year.
Exactly. It's a huge factor that doesn't, you know, unless you.
Yeah, that's, that's my, my first blink on it too is, I mean, we're encouraging for a longer past, it's a little bit too, so. I mean, I agree, it's, it's. You're basing this on things that you can't fully predict. My question is more about at what point do we look at the divergence and go, okay, we're at a point, we wait till twenty thirty-three year, do we do it in twenty?
I don't know.
Twenty thirty-two or twenty-eight or nine, I, I, to me, I just. The question is, is when do we feel comfortable? Cause I appreciate that if we do it now, it's gonna put us in a bad position, but if we do our plan now. At some point, we're gonna go, okay, we're pretty comfortable. So I'm, I'm not sure twenty thirty-three is a lot.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Maybe, and as, as the summers get by and like, okay, we had a really dry summer and now the sun is, is hotter. You know, so as we see that gap getting, like, okay.
And it also does give us some flexibility potentially in the future that. For having industrial growth trouble, we could slash, you know, some commercial areas trying to work out.
I'd, I'd rather have the flexibility to do something like that in the future and go, well, how can we, how can we work these? So it's beneficial for development and everything else and then still maintain the load gap.
The other opportunity we have too is with the sewer fund being more flush, um. We have an opportunity, we could um, transfer to a one-time transfer from that fund to the water fund. Fifty-two million dollars to help reduce the amount of bonding. Um, and the sewer fund is still very healthy. So um, that is an option. They're both user B enterprise funds and did not need it in a fund loan. As other transfers from an enterprise fund to like the general fund. So um, that is an opportunity to, something that we talked about internally.
It's looking like twenty-eight or twenty-nine as well, which is a pretty big.
Yeah, so you know, one of the reasons we put both scenarios in there is um, it's not a. Urgent decision. You have to tell us tonight, you know, next year is gonna be the same, no matter what. But I do think, at least over the winter time, I think we'd like to get some pretty clear direction from the council on whether or not we want to. Go down the expansion route or the satellite route and, and we can dedicate some time in future meetings to, to have longer discussions on that.
I mean, I don't mean to get down the road, but the more I thought about the last time we talked about it, we can find a good partner to settle on, really. Yeah, I mean, I think I personally could have that conversation sooner than later. Feeling pretty comfortable with the direction we should go on, but. Yeah, I mean, I, back to the rates, I think what's presenting sense for. For next year at least.
And it just, you know, too, with the sewer rate rate increase of three percent, um, that council, which is, that is the cost of processing.
Yeah.
The water, um, they had a. A five, five point, eight point three percent increase was their rate for us. So uh, three fourth, we're just passing along a portion of that increase to customer.
The only thing, and maybe I don't want to get ahead of you, but the only thing I disagreed with in this was the uh, utility billing comment about. Cause there was a comment that staff didn't feel as though the change to a monthly billing would be significant. I, just based on the folks that I know, especially over the summer, having either monthly or. I think we can put out there uh, semi-monthly billing, so even adding two additional billing uh, cycles. Would help change habits in the summertime if they're feeling like that rate, like they've used too much water in their irrigation. Um, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I was just, um, that we are trying to push the water smart app because people aren't aware that that it's out there and they can be watching their irrigation news. Like realize, and a lot of them that, they get that high bill or like. And our utility staff are like, well, you've been watering every day. Do you realize that's a code violation? And they don't know these things. And so we're, we're actually working on some communications to get that word out. Water smart and that's the reason the city went um, invested in that app to, for people to be, you can get all the flags you want on your account to let you know. You've got a possible leaking toilet or whatever. So we've got that. Um, yes, more and more people are signing up for e-bills and and that helps. But there's still a lot of staff time and the costs associated with mailing out statements, so. You know, it's a balancing act. We've got this many statements to be mailed out and what that cost is to um. To speak to, you know, okay, this costs the city this much money when we add two more billing cycles in. Until by, if we want to, you know, two months.
I just, the way that the quarters line up with the summer, it's hard to change your habits. For the rest of that term, you've already gone most of the summer, especially the driest month of the year, and you already get that giant bill. And from a budget standpoint, um, every three months getting a bill, it it's just harder to. Figure out that in your, your monthly uh, personal budget. I don't know. I just still maintain that I think, even if we could, uh, cause I think monthly would be ideal. Most people's budgets aren't a monthly cycle. But I think adding two more cycles in would be helpful too, because then the way that that billing. Um, lines up, I think it's. May and July, and then September is when you get those bills.
September.
Would it be a logistics nightmare? To consider like what gas does and then do a.
Budget plan.
Budget plan where it's like, you know, in July and August, you're paying six hundred dollars or whatever the number is. But January, you're paying whatever, like, can we?
That's actually, I mean, it's an option when people sign up, when they register their, their account, they can pay a monthly amount of whatever, whatever their total annual bill is. And that'll, you know, create a, a balance on the account, you know, until they hit irrigation time. And then that'll pull away from that. So they could budget it that way.
So that's a self-s aligned that versus like I was just setting up.
Yeah.
It exists.
Setup, yeah. It's a setup. They would say, I want to pay a hundred dollars a month. And it would just happen among every month.
So they could, they could take from their previous year and go, I use this much. I anticipate spending this and we'll divide it by twelve.
Right.
And then if it, if it is more because they irrigate more in a real dry year, where, when do they pay that? Do they pay that extra quarter?
Well, and then that's, they started in January, you know, they're gonna be building up a balance, a credit balance on their account because it, you know, it will.
Oh.
You know, and then it's like, okay, then the irrigation may clear out that credit balance by September or if, you know. Or there's some, could be somewhat depending on.
What happens at the end of the year? Do you get that back or is it just?
It just rolls. It stays on the account.
So. I'd be curious if we could spend a little bit of staff time to see if there's a benefit of us. And doing that on, in that. Is there a way for us to generate a little interest income? On what, on what we're holding? And is that offset? Any type of, any type of. You know, administration on it or.
And I, I.
Cause personally, I haven't signed for it. I didn't even know those, I mean. And I don't even water that much, but I.
And and as we, when we switched over to the new payment system, some, the check, the amount of personal checks that came in room. These people, you know, as they were adjusting and and anytime we have to process a personal check, it's extra staff time. And so then you've got staff that are having to process all these manual checks. Again, you know, I don't, I have to find out from my staff. They think that they would need one more person if we had, if we went to bimonthly.
What if we, how do we do the automatic?
We'll look, yeah, I know, we'll look at seeing if we can set a budget plan, yeah. The monthly. The monthly.
I mean, it's just. Personally, it's hard, but to do your own personal budget when you're, you know, you got.
What you're, what you're concerned about is the checks coming in a month later.
Yes.
So we can set it up so it's a monthly budget only, opt E.
On E, yeah.
You gotta use E.
Yeah.
And that, and that is a, that process doesn't take any extra staff time, it's a file that comes in, so.
So there be any interest in the council and incentivizing or disincentivizing paper bills by charging a fee for paper bills?
It's so standard on, on. Too much every credit bank company to test them. It usually decides the automatic billing.
Exactly, yeah.
E, E, uh, you know, for five dollars for every. Credit.
Yeah, cause we brought it up before and there wasn't an interest, but, um. It's become pretty commonplace.
Well, I think people are getting more comfortable with our new system too.
We'll look at that too.
So the preference would be to going to giving credit, a dollar amount credit if they sign up for emails and E C H versus. Charging for paper statements, is that?
No, my, my, just like your cell bill, you're, you. You, your bill is your bill, you pay more if you get it's paper bill.
Paper, okay, yeah.
There's to be a paper surcharge on that.
Yeah.
What?
How?
Well, that would cover kind of the posted and the, and the extra, oh, well, I know, yeah, that's something.
I mean, I think it's, I'm thinking on like my cell phone bill, I wanna say it's like two or three dollars or something.
What, um, you said, like, what percentage still get paid?
Um.
We had that somewhere.
It's in the.
Oh, that's in your.
Um.
Some have been paid, but I think. I know, I'm at the link.
Yeah, so then.
Switch systems.
Receiving emails is, um. Fifty percent.
Three, no, this is not for.
Which is up from thirty-two percent in twenty.
And this is a, that, an, an aside, cause I wasn't here during water tier restructuring, so everybody pays that lowest rate on their first six thousand gallons. It's like your, it's like income taxes, okay, so the high users aren't paying six dollars on it. Everything.
Right, no, you're only paying the highest rate on your, over the.
Right.
We went round and round this.
Yeah.
Well, I know. Your high, of our highest users, Scott.
Any other questions on those before I go to liquor?
Oh, that's fine.
So, um, liquor projections, we have a, um, roughly three percent increase in revenues. For the twenty twenty-six budget over twenty twenty-five budget. Um. Different next with the stores there. The transfers out are increasing six hundred thousand, which all of that six hundred thousand now increases coming into the equipment fund. For supporting those purchases. Um, and then we've got eighty-five thousand dollars worth of capital costs, the gas decline needs to be done and then kind of. Living can. Reflections, so. That's, that's the top level.
And maybe Tana is a better person to ask this question, but. Um, start to be aware, where always does a story every year, oh, here's the top municipal. Lakeville is the biggest revenue, but they're not the most efficient. Is there, is there really something that we're not doing right to maximize our? Only profits or we just really get a customer service and we lose a little of that?
No, it, it really comes down to what the individual cities, how they charge their costs back to the municipal, municipal liquor funds.
Ah, okay.
So we charge a hundred percent of all the costs, so snow flowing, any municipal work that's done, that I'll just charge back to the, the city. Other cities don't do that, they, it's absorbed into public works or absorbed into park right. And that's why it makes their overhead look better than ours because.
Makes sense.
They're not shot out of.
Overhead is a, a calculation, so that can change wildly between what cities allocate for them.
So in theory, their general taxpayers are subsidizing their liquor operations.
They could.
Write the numbers.
Some don't do a payment load taxes, we do, back to, you know, the, the, the losses in expense.
Okay, makes total sense.
And just in, noting too, in the liquor fund, if you looked at the projected working capital strategy, um. And how we are showing what we anticipate we could transfer to the equipment fund, so the one point five million in twenty-six. And then going outward from that, one point two million in twenty twenty-seven, and then nine hundred thousand, those years from now. Um, also helping out communications fund, the liquor fund. Could be, um, transferring out two hundred thousand, and we're still. Um, maintaining very healthy working capital balance, so, um.
Getting closer on those police station bonds, man.
Just for time. Twenty twenty-seven, I know what you're talking, or no, can we say?
No, it's thirty.
Galaxy thirty-two is.
Thirty-one.
Third last year. Yeah, but. Yeah, but then these guys got cute because then they were looking at the C I P and they already spent the money when it roll up, so they didn't even get to spend. Uh, it's nice to see the revenue in the inquiry room too, by the way.
Secondly.
That's great.
We're getting a lot of good compliments about that.
Yeah, that's. I was at first, when we talked about it years ago, I thought it didn't make sense, but it really went. Definitely paid itself.
I shouldn't say my career, but.
Schedule?
Schedule. So, um. All of the project, and I'm just gonna touch on the highlights, we will be, I mean, probably doing, um, December first, because we always do, um. Most of any, any of these changes that are going to do with the staff already rates, um, adjusting base for our calls, because we do cover, um, two and a half. Times the staff, uh, all in rate. We did, um, there was a three percent increase on the application fees, um. For, that, that, again, we do a measurement against the market value of.
I hear a question about that, like, let's say that C D A wants to partner with us on something, is that, can we decide to?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, yeah. Okay, sorry.
Um, and with the council, we're documenting tree preservation ordinance that change, um, so now we've got a tree replacement fee and, uh, replacements. Um, so if they don't have enough site. Space, you know, for an actual tree replacement thing, they may have to pay. Um, we did remove the line items, those providing CDs and E D Bs, because we don't have the. Machine to redo that, we can keep that one for a while, I guess, um, we removed the T H C license. Obviously, that is now our fee of office of management. Um, did add rental fee for the Grand Prairie baseball field to the hand. Will be open to twenty-six, we also did add in the fees for the first center anticipated to open in June. We did not include the public fee for that because we would like to have the. The new operations managers at the first center do some research to find out what it is and availability, what tiny slots would look up for that public use shooting range. One.
On the parks, please. Is. We don't have latitude just to keep the resident rates flat per year and. Still increase the non-resident. Is that gonna play a big? All in your budget? It, I'm sorry, I'm reaching on the spot.
Yeah, that's okay, that's why I stayed, um, it won't, I will say, we, so we did hold steady on, like, John and the Pavilion, we kept the same. This is only showing some of the changes.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, at antlers, you know, uh, for instance, I mean, twenty dollars is not a dollar amount, but percentage wise, it's a lot to go from one twenty to one forty. Um. But then I guess you're really just incentivizing people around to think the whole day. Cause it's only thirty dollars more to add. Four more dollars?
And the reason we suggested the price increase was we had looked at market rate for similar style facilities and we were behind. So instead of doing a massive jump in the future, our goal was to do minimal increases here over the next few years. To get those facilities up to where they should be. But. I, I understand.
And it's, it's a really, you know. Uh, maybe I wanna, I wanna. No, I mean, it is a lot, um. I had thought about bringing up at some point in this future, uh, a. In, in Denver, you are a member of the parks system, and I don't know if you've. Been looking at that already, but it basically allows you to use and priority at a lower than. Your, but. Well, I don't wanna be a plug, that's actually, but.
But you collect a fee.
Like a state park fee.
Basically, yeah, um. And then it just allows you some very, very, uh. One reservation a year or something like that, it, it, the rates do seem steep to me for residents, but. So, yeah. Um, I had similar questions about the fields, because I don't quite understand the grouping rates, um. Can you explain that a little bit too?
Sure. Um. So we have the group rates, uh, the way that our fee structures are, are structured for. Parks, they are tiered, so if you're a Lakeville-based association, it's one rate. If you are, so tier one, tier two, tier three, so if you're a non-resident association, or fifty percent of your, a, a group is non-resident, then you're in a different tier. It dictates when you can reserve our facilities and it dictates how much you pay. So that's the grouping rate, is group one, two, one through five.
What's? Back to ours, what is the mix on resident versus non-resident? Present richies currently, you know, percentage wise?
Uh, percentage wise, it depends on the facility.
At Antlers?
At, okay, at Antlers. I'd have to go back to pull it, I believe this last year, um, we, because it's three months later that reservations start for antlers, so. That high point season, May through, you know, fourth of July, uh, the bulk of those were rented by the time we get. Um, end of March, when we start reservations for non-residents, so it's gonna depend on the time of year. So. I would say seventy-five percent is my best guess if I had to at this point for peak season for antlers.
I don't know what the right number is, but maybe I just.
Would it, would it help if we showed you where the comps are that we.
Yeah.
Use to.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are.
We can do that one big.
And, and I. I'm gonna just throw us out there, because it's a pretty thing to think about and I don't want to go into it, but if parking continues to be. A challenge.
You know where you're going.
Firmity for residents versus non-residents and more than that, so I would just forget, but. Could be a disaster, because in non-residents, if you're parking all the neighbors, I don't know. Thanks for having all these answers on, uh, here. Can I ask one other question?
Um, made Susan steak. As you would know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. On the flip side, it seems like a hundred and fifty dollars per game is low for Grand Prairie baseball field. If I'm thinking about how many. Elements are a part of using that space.
We settled one hundred and fifty again because Susan did research on what similar facilities are looking for, so we're always shooting for. Not the lowest, that was not the highest, we're always shooting for kind of mid-road, which is where we settled one hundred and fifty.
Okay, and is that inclusive of the concession lights and all that stuff?
Yeah, so it's inclusive, there are a lot of facilities like that have a. Game day and a night rate, so lights, no lights, but that is historically been done because, you know, the metal halide lights were expensive to run, these were all over the deal.
Sure.
So we don't have that same type of expense, we wanted to, we're always trying to make our fee structures simple as well. So we went with the higher rate and just, which would have been the night rate and just said, good.
Are those town ball teams, was there any conversation about revenue share on ticket versus?
We have a ticket share set in the master group L B A.
Okay.
Um, that rate has to be finalized yet, but it's written into.
Resets, okay, yeah. Thank you.
And like for that field two. Prioritizing requests. You know, I need to see some, some other town ball team coming in and reserve the whole thing, yeah, I, I. L B A's got first, first use, and that includes not just their town ball team, that includes their other games.
Yeah.
So we put a fee in because we needed to, we still don't know what the balance is gonna be for access, uh, on that field.
Well, the L B A is, you know.
Yeah.
Sold. Game time to.
Spots, which is.
Yeah.
Anything else on your fee schedule?
Changing chicken fee, huh?
You want more?
No, we'll talk about that later, in a later session.
Seventy sounds good, I mean.
Yeah, we're gonna charge a per egg.
You're just gonna three hundred and four.
Pay tax.
You're gonna report every egg in that. We're gonna send the people who were gonna do T H C checks over to.
Insurance. There was one other one, that it is a total pass through fee, the state of Minnesota finally changed their water supply connection fee. Went up from, um, nine seventy-two to fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents per connection. So, and that is a true pass through, we collect it and we send it to the state, so. Um, that means an increase of two dollars and forty-three cents per quarter. And that is the only other large change.
Why did the walk behind stripe or double? You're getting.
It's gonna be more than four.
I think that one might have been a few days. From six to thirteen.
Stripes are gonna be straight.
Yeah, it's under equipment uses. It's like where we're odor grater, dump trunk, you know, air compressor. Yeah, just the similar to. I guess all.
Yeah, these are all usually based on the FEMA schedule. Very, very rarely, very rarely these charged.
Good. Or third quarter, fourth.
Um, so nothing surprising, we are coming in, um. Good, um, the revenues and general fund, our property taxes, we're actually at fifty-three percent of budget. This still the midpoint of the year is far as when we bid those payments in, um. So, and all the other, um, intergovernmental license, everything from, um, above budget, which. The intergovernmental just shows at thirty-three percent because the fire and police state aid doesn't come to us first, so that can't be fucked with in here. With that, we'd be up to about seventy-five percent. Um, revenue or expenditures are doing well, they're being in under budget, so they're at sixty-eight percent, um, so. Nice savings there so far, everything. And, um, what do you get in that change in the fund balance at this point in time of roughly five million dollars to the good? So, um. That's where we are at. Sorry, that's the variance from the, we are, year to date, the revenues we see are underneath based on these by six million. Again, having to do with the property taxes coming in in June and December, so. Um, the variance of budget, like I said, is a five million dollar positive, so we're doing well. Um, nothing too alarming with the water and sewer funds, again, the revenue increases. We're seeing are mostly based on growth. Cause of that we've had this wet, um, summer, we're not seeing huge revenues in those funds, um. And. And again, the small increases in the street light and. Biological resources funds, again, those revenue increases are growth, um, based. So just, just in growing, those are coming above, um, last year's at the same time. Um. Those are it in a nutshell, that's safer grant, um, when they mentioned, we, um. In this report is up through September, will be taken during September and with the government shutdown starting October first. Um. Not giving those monthly payments from the feds is not reflected on here, it is, it is a reality, we're not. They're on hold right now, we're not getting a monthly reimbursement, but it's not breaking the bank, and this is why we have a fund balance, and we hold out two for these. Things, and, and again, it's not an amount that would. Put the city in jeopardy by any stretch of the means, stretch of the word, so, um. That's it for financial summaries, um, you know, it's in there for detail, and as far as where the finance. And as far as where the finance department is at, with our completed status, we've gotten through the twenty twenty four audit and that report is done. Um, we did get the excellence award, as, as was mentioned at the October meeting, for the thirty eighth year, is that right? Thirty six. That thirty six year is free. Um, we have gotten through all the twenty twenty six budgets for twenty twenty one one and the Lakeville arenas. You're fine tuning the general funds, seeing if there's any more, um, changes we can make with that in the right direction. Uh, we have the bond sale this past year, which included that that large eighteen million that was the first center on bonds. And we continue to work on, now that we've gotten through implementation. We are working on process improvements and, uh, procedural notes, being that we've gotta get ready for the next year's audit. And, um, hopefully they caught up on the report, so. Um, right now in the middle of the regood certifications and those payments, as I say, coming in, kind of. Uh, beat the deadline, so they don't get into the property tax rules. So that's that, and I did plug into the utility accounts, so our utility accounts are, we've got three two percent growth. And the number of utility comes from twenty fourteen. So that's how much the city's growing, that's a, that's a significant. The, um, the payment methods, and that, you referenced that earlier. Side line printouts and grade, that doesn't. So, um, the utility payment where it says, um, it's got the purple and red and green bars. So as you can see, those purple bars, um, those are the check payments and that, you know, those have gone down. You can see them going down from twenty twenty three to twenty point four, but twenty twenty five is only nine months worth. So I'm expecting that twenty twenty five, when we get all the payments in, it'll be closer to what twenty twenty three was, check payments, maybe more. But again, as people get changed over to the new system, register, get the payments set up, hopefully those annual checks will go down. And we've got fifty percent sign up for our EDOs, which is great. And, um, hoping to continue that, maybe even more people will go green. They're made aware of. If we, and we start touching up.
So on the benefit of monthly purchase, I mean, I feel like it would be a huge incentive.
On the, uh, on the report, the licensing and branding section, is it possible to break out towns and rentals or something?
No, because we don't issue, we don't issue, it's just a town.
Okay, so we live in all of those. We don't call it apartment technically, we don't know. It's like little apartments on one side.
We have a threshold for what we call apartments, I mean.
So like the springs, what do we consider that, when that was?
That's an apartment.
Okay, it is. Last one.
Hey, my revenue, um, looking at the special revenue communication spreadsheet, um, I mean, it was a half million dollars for the franchise fee. Just on cable, or is that?
The office thing, um, just being.
So the, for the whole year.
Um.
Probably.
Well, the full, the whole budget for the franchise is four hundred ninety thousand.
And that's just the cable, that's.
That's cable.
That's.
Just cable.
Um, it still seems like.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's five percent of your bill. Those, those are that cable.
Interesting, so it's not a per. Was the, is, am I missing a line for where's the, the revenue on? The other franchise fee.
We did not include it this time, because we've only gotten one quarters worth.
Okay.
So, and I, I weighed that against, it's like, okay, it's not. Fully complete, you know, we just, just got our first quarter, we're still working, we were working out our case with the utility companies, we think they were. That's from all the, the properties. So next, next time, next quarterly report, we will have it for the two quarters worth. We have, um, they have till October thirty first to send us their payment for the second quarter's billing since this started. Um, we've received one payment so far, so we're still waiting on them.
Cause they're collecting monthly, but they pay us quarterly.
Yes.
Any other questions? Move on, any items for future discussion? Okay. Uh, any committee or city administrator updates?
We had the I thirty five W Solutions Alliance meeting, um, we had to, it was the first meeting after that in the summer. So I was just coming back in and, uh. Getting up to date and everything and. Pretty much, uh, nothing really to report there, moving, projects are moving on, if you haven't noticed, there's some work being done at thirty five.
Yeah, I was curious if they gave like an update on like.
Their, ever it's gonna be done.
Yeah, June, will they open lanes up through the winter or are we stuck with this till the whole project's done?
I believe we're gonna just, that my understanding is, is we'll be stuck with it till the project's done, but. You know, that can change, we didn't get in depth on the.
Do you know Paul?
Yeah, the new lanes are gonna be open this fall, yeah, the old lanes still, still, uh, will still have more phone traffic on those and then, uh, next year, they're. Stretchable as well, so there's still gonna be work on.
Yeah, so through the winter technically, there's more.
Yeah, we, though, though, the narrowed lanes should be, uh, extended.
Got it, okay.
Helen's all the charging areas out there that you.
Yeah, so that's.
But just the storm will all come into this place.
Yeah.
That's scary, the rainstorm.
What if you get two semi?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, I happen to have a cell in next to you.
Yeah, somebody could tell Jay they're gonna straighten those barriers out.
Um, the fire relief board is working, uh, quickly on a proposal that they'll want to present at Dallas, um, once in. Regarding the three year plan for increasing. Contribution to their individual pension funds, uh, a best ring schedule change and a state aid share. Which will help support the full time pension. The pensions of the full time firefighter, so. So a couple of questions, maybe, you know, have they organized as a new, with the full timers having any idea about that?
So it doesn't impact the full timers, is they're gonna, they're in para, and so the money's getting paid to para, whether it's. Their contribution or the city contribution, so the state aid share would offset what the city pays toward that. They have organized, they haven't developed a contract yet.
And then, so they're off the old plan of the. They find contribution, they no longer want to go down the path of changing their benefit plan. Mostly because the state's recent change to twenty thousand each per service year. Has incentivized this as some more beneficial pension plan for departments versus the other. Which was more risky, because it was an individual account that would fit with the markets. Um, this at the end of the tenure year would be, uh, lumped sum of their services. It's, it's an important, I think, moment to. Kind of partner with the relief here, because I think there are a lot of sensitivities about the big changes to going full time. There are some sensitivities to, well, this is one step towards, uh, only full time department, never getting rid of, uh, hit on call. Um, I've tried to reassure the board that that's not, uh. Direction that, that I see the council wanting to go financially, that that makes sense, go full time anyway. Um, but by figuring out, negotiating, uh, some terms here with the state aid and escalating their pensions over the next couple of years, I think. The place, uh, as a hybrid department, so.
Yeah, I would just encourage them, if you have, to think about the fact that at one point, we were going down a route. That really reduced the city's liability. And now we're going back in the other direction. So my encouragement to think about how. If there's shortfalls in what their plan is, how that's addressed, I think is important.
Well, and I think we, part of how the city benefits here is that state aided for this coming year is seven hundred eighty one thousand dollars. And so. We had put out some numbers in terms of what that percentage should share back to the city should be, or to the city. You know, and to me, something around the lines of thirty percent of that, I think, should come to support the full time pension. And I think that's a significant, um, amount of money that, in terms of liability, I mean, we would still be on the hook if. You know, their, their fund went below a hundred percent, but we'll have these contributions that are being. Offsetting what we're already paying. And there is a max, um, amount that we can actually contribute to the full time pensions anyways, that seventeen and a half percent. Uh, so we can't, we can't even take more than that amount, um, for full time, so. Getting in the weeds with the pensions is, uh. A whirlwind, because there's a lot of, uh, little things, but. I'm hoping in terms of looking at budgets for next year, that we're gonna do something. By the end of this year.
We have it, we have it scheduled for the November work session right now, um, and Mike knows that. The December one is a pretty quick turnaround after that, because we moved it up, so the December work session is December eighth, so. Mike was relating that information to the board that they need to get to us by November.
I think it'll make a little more sense when we see all this. But it's a lot of.
Okay.
Um, one quick personnel, maybe update, you should have got an email from Melissa, I guess, that even the straighter, you know, we should just make sure you knew your.
What was that?
November seventh.
I need to. Have they all big motion here? So, your second? Paul's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.